Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to order the special council meeting for November 29th, 2010. First thing as always is roll call and determination of a quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson, Wyffenbach, Davis, Headcock, Kroger, Costello, Quaker.
Here.
Waugh.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Quorum is here.
Very good. We have a quorum. Just a couple of reminders. First of all, if you have a cellphone or a pager, we please ask you to turn that off or into the vibrate mode. If you do need to take a phone call during the meeting, we would ask that you actually step out so you do not disrupt those that are presenting. Also, if you wish to speak on any one of the two items on the agenda, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. To your left or right on the media table, if you please fill that out with your name and the item number. That way, as we go down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. Also a reminder, this is a special council meeting. So by state statute, the only two things that we can discuss tonight are the two items that are on the agenda. The first one, and let's see here, I'm going to go to Mr. Wyffenbach. Could you since I think you're vice chair of that, do you want to go ahead and read in item number one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one, Main Street Square Site Development Project Number PR-1010 opened on November 19th, 2010. Motion is for approval?
Okay, can we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Pauline, if you could go through that and-
That's really small type to get all of that in there.
If you want to do one sheet at a time, I'm having even a hard time. If you can zoom in a little bit more, I'm having a hard time reading it. There, thank you. Then maybe scoot it up a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. The bids were opened, and the architect's estimate for this project for the base bid alone was $4,240,000. We did receive five bids on this project, and the base bids ranged from $3.2 million to about $4.1 million, and then with the alternates there, one through six, and then I had the rest of them, seven through 10, on here, and I'll put that there now. The recommendation is to award the base bid of, it is $3,224,000, and all of the alternates, one through nine, excluding number 10, to Seco Construction in the total amount of $3,920,680.
Is that all right with the motion maker? Okay, and also the secretary? Okay. We have a motion and a second to award the bid to the lowest bidder, which is Seco Construction, which is the base bid, plus alternates one through nine inclusive, with the exception of 10, for a total amount of $3,920,680. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number two, the Jackson Boulevard and Mountain View Road discussion in hearing, and this is the department, we'll have a presentation from the South Dakota Department of Transportation. For the sake of discussion, can we have a motion? Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I assume the motion would be to acknowledge the report at this time. We can take action. Okay? With that, we'll turn to the state DOT. And Joel, on the little screen, there is where it says start presentation on the little screen right next to you, you can press that, and hopefully there you go.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Appreciate the opportunity to come to you this evening and discuss this topic. The purpose of the meeting is to request your concurrence to remove public parking along Jackson Boulevard near the Mountain View intersection. This is public parking that is located on that portion of city property that is on Jackson Boulevard. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Neil Schochtermeyer, who is my engineering supervisor in the road design office. He will help me answer the technical questions when we get to that part of the presentation. My presentation, our presentation this evening will provide some project background information. We will review the overall design of the highway. We'll look at the current issues of the existing intersection, which again is Jackson Boulevard and Mountain View. We will provide a brief overview of all of the options that we reviewed and looked at, and then we will look at the parking study that was done this past summer, and then finally look at the two final options and request your concurrence. So getting started, a little background information, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly because I believe some of you have already seen this. South Dakota 44, which is also considered Jackson Boulevard, was constructed in 1963. We did pavement repairs in 1992 and also 1999. As most of you know, the pavement is in fairly poor condition. Current traffic volumes that we have is 11,000 vehicles a day on the west side of Sheridan Lake Road and 21,000 vehicles a day on the east side of Sheridan Lake Road. Projected traffic and the projection is in the year 2027, is for 15,000 and 29,000 respectively for either side of that intersection. Truck traffic currently is 4.3, and the posted speed limit is 35 mile an hour. And one other important aspect that I would like you to remember is our design is not for just current condition. It is for traffic volumes in the year, 25 years out, and the facility as a whole is being designed for 40-year life. The old facility was built or designed in 1960 standards, so we've kind of come a little ways on that area. Again, Jackson Boulevard, the corridor itself, is two projects in our stip. The east project is from Rapid Creek to Mountain View, planned to be constructed in the year 2011. The west project goes from Chapel Lane to the Rapid Creek and is scheduled for 2014. For the sake of discussion, I would like to consider Jackson Boulevard running east and west, and Mountain View running north and south, just so we can kind of get our directions and all speak the same language. Those projects are $7.5 and $7.1 million respectively in their fiscal years. Scope of the work that we have, in essence, is a complete reconstruction. We will be replacing the concrete pavement, and we have sidewalk, storm sewer, lighting, traffic signals, and the city will also be upgrading their water mains and sanitary sewer lines at the same time, at their own cost. Typical section that we have, again, we have two lanes in each direction with a center turn lane for, in the center that acts as a two-way left turn lane. The outside driving lanes will also be considered share lanes to accommodate a bike lane, and then separate pedestrian paths will be on the outside of the grass Work completed to date. Plans are nearing completion with the exception of this intersection. We believe that we have spent quite a bit of time in great detail looking at the issues at the intersection and identifying some solutions and proposed designs. We have also worked with city engineering staff and growth management staff. We have held four public meetings, and two of those specifically have been for the design of this intersection. And so with that, we have gained input from the stakeholders, including the public. Of the last public meeting that we held, which was on August 31st, 2010, we asked the individuals to rate their preferred option, and this slide reflects the comments that we received on that. Although the do-nothing option was presented, we really can't consider reconstructing this intersection and not addressing the pedestrian ADA issues that we have. Therefore, the do-nothing option really is not an option for us, and I can get into that later on in the presentation. Pedestrians, and in particular handicap accessible users, must be able to utilize the facility and not be discriminated against. This requirement is not only established in law, but it also is, quite frankly, the right thing to do. Accommodating them will, in essence, help us to make this intersection much more user-friendly. So let's shift gears and discuss some of the deficiencies that we have with the current As stated earlier, the intersection does not meet or accommodate the pedestrian movements for the ADA. We have no curb ramp openings. We have no pedestrian signals. There are no pedestrian refuges that need to be provided, and because of the angled intersection, the crossings are no longer typically allowed under today's standards. Again, these were 1960 standards when this highway was built. Other problems that we have is the southbound motorists have a skewed approach, which creates safety problems because of poor line of sight. This makes it very difficult to see any red light runners that may happen out there. It also makes it difficult to be a defensive driver, because in essence, you have to look through the vehicle or the backside of your vehicle and turn your head, and that's the case for both the southbound and the westbound travelers. These same travelers see signal displays that are more than just for their approach. They also see the opposing traffic signals. The southbound left turn vehicle on Mountain View, and I should probably be using this pen here if I figure out how to use it. Southbound left turn lanes, and that's this movement right here that I'm discussing, does not have the pleasure of being able to utilize the traffic signal that's there. In essence, this intersection acts separately than this intersection. This is a stop control with just a stop sign. So they have to wait until a gap occurs before they can make that maneuver. And the intersection as a whole has an accident rate of 1.3 accidents per million vehicles. And although this is not extremely high relative to accident rates, we do believe that it can be approved upon. Now I'm going to just expand upon some of these issues in a little more detail here. As stated on the last slide, because of the severe skew of the intersection, the southbound and the westbound motorists see their signal heads as well as the opposing traffic signal heads. Typically, you should be only able to see your signal heads, and as you can see here, both greens, that would be for the opposing traffic, you can visualize those at the intersection as you're sitting waiting there. This creates confusion, especially with distracted drivers, and it's a very undesirable situation. This slide shows a good example of what should be displayed. Again, the drivers should just be able to see their view of the approach as they're entering it and not to be able to see the other approach on the opposite side. So again, you should just be able to view those, and this green arrow or this green ball that is on the opposing, as you can see, it's not in sight. So that would be the desirable display. Again, as I pointed out earlier, the issue is that the southbound traffic, Mountain View waiting to take a left, is not included in the signal. So you have a stop sign that you're sitting at, waiting at. Until this queue traffic clears out, you have to sit and wait, and you also have to anticipate when that signal, what phase it's in, in order to make a safe change and go at the correct time. Finally, because the intersection is not ADA accessible, pedestrians must travel a significant distance to access curb openings to cross the street. As you know, the tendency for people to walk long distances to get to their point of destination is not really conducive to how they travel. So instead of walking all the way back to the intersection, if I am here at the intersection and I want to get to an access that has an opening, if I'm in a wheelchair, I have to travel this distance and then cross the intersection of Fulton, which has a signalized intersection, and then if I was wanting to stay on public right-of-way, I'd have to travel all the way back and then traverse in this manner. Another option that people seem to do is instead of traveling back, they cut across into private The newly reconstructed Mountain View accommodates the ability for pedestrians to stay within the public right-of-way. The goal that we have for the redesign of this intersection is a number of things. First, squaring up the intersection is probably one of the utmost things that we're trying to accomplish. It provides a safer intersection for both motorists and pedestrians, as the crossing times and distances are shorter and reduce the length of conflict. It also improves the visibility of the signal displays for both the southbound and westbound motorists, which is less confusing as discussed earlier. It provides a southbound to eastbound left turn lane that operates with traffic signals that improve the traffic flow. In essence, the reduction of traffic going through private parking lots, and I'm talking about vehicle traffic now. Another goal is to provide pedestrian crossings that are ADA accessible, and we would be looking at using accessible countdown timers, similar to what we have elsewhere in the city. One of the other goals that we have is not to negatively affect nearby intersection operations. In essence, we want to avoid improving this intersection at the cost or the expense of other intersections like Fulton, West Main Street, and Canyon Lake Drive. This was a similar intersection a number of years ago that we reconstructed. This, the intersection is West Main and Sergeus Road. The old alignment, as you can see, was pretty much of the same type of skew, and we went in and reconstructed that intersection and fairly well teed it up. So it has been realigned and teed it up. In essence, is what we're proposing on this intersection. The accident rate for this intersection is 64% lower than what it is at Mountain View and Jackson. Although past performance is not a guarantee of future things, it would be hoped and anticipated that we could reduce the accidents by, in essence, what I'm stating here this evening. We would like to, if we had the reduction at the same rate, this would equate to 20 less vehicles, accidents over a four-year period. Switching gears again, let's talk about some of the options that we reviewed for this intersection. In essence, we had about 10 options, and they've been a variation of some options, and we have two of those that are still left. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. I believe that you have a handout that you provided earlier on that provides a little more detail in here, but I would like to just go through these just to give an overall. Option one was very similar to the existing intersection, the way it operates today. It does not solve the skew problems. It still did not eliminate the issue with poor sight and the signal displays that go with that. There is excess delay for the westbound travelers. Part of the reason for this is amount of the delay that's going to see. There's going to be about nine seconds of yellow and all red time, in essence, for that tire intersection. For these vehicles that are waiting here until this light, this signal allows this movement to go, they have to wait until this signal turns red, and then you've got this delay time of this distance for that intersection to clear, which provides overall delay for the intersection. The intersection is also difficult path, travel path from east to west for the pedestrians. Let's see, I need to back up here. Okay, option 1A was very similar to option 1. The difference was that we were signaling a private drive or a private entrance on the south side of the intersection. This signalization at this major intersection also creates additional delay for the, overall for the users that use the intersection. Option 2 was an intersection that, although it didn't provide a near 90-degree, it did somewhat change the skew of it slightly. The positives were that it helped with the pedestrian travel, the line of sight and the signal displays, including the clearance time that it takes to travel through the intersection. The negative part was, though, it didn't get to the point where we really desired for those things. It also created more landowner issues. We needed to, ended up looking at this business, which is pure less tire and the need for right-of-way there, and it also eliminated all of the parking on the Jackson Boulevard section of the city. Option 3A teed up the intersection. It provides, the positives were that it provided a desirable alignment and significantly improved the pit path, again, the line of sight and the signal display. The negative part was that this radius on center line, the radiuses are too short on the Mountain View leg, which can lead people to stray from their lane assignments. This is one of the shortfalls on the intersection that I had earlier in the presentation, is that if those radiuses are too tight, people end up straying across their lane and going into the next lane. The intersection of Sergeus Road and West Main, I drove that for nine years while I lived here, and I don't know how many times that I saw people cross over that lane, and part of the issue was that the radiuses were too tight. This issue could lead to increase in accidents due to the fact you, in essence, sideswipes and people not seeing where they're supposed to. The option also would have signaled the private approach here, and again, which created some delay for the overall movements Option 4 is a somewhat complex design, at least from looking at it. In essence, it would switch the main movement of travel from Mountain View to Jackson Boulevard. One of the main desires of any designer is to minimize the driver confusion, in essence, keep it simple, and this option definitely did not provide that. So this was thrown out just based on the amount of confusion that it would provide for the traveling public. Option 5 was similar to other designs that were looked at. It would have provided, again, a desirable intersection alignment right at the intersection, and it would have improved the pit path and the clearance time. The negative aspects of this design is that, in essence, it provides a reverse curve or an S curve at the intersection. This increases the possibility, again, that people will not stay in their lane assignments, and in slippery conditions, there is more likely of a chance of vehicles going out of the control versus a straight tangent alignment. The signal display, again, approaching the intersection, if you're at a vehicle sitting here and trying to see your signal, the cone of vision for that is beyond the intersection where the traffic signals would be positioned at. Other items and negatives of this is the increased cost of parking at the Clarkson property, which in essence gets us into 4F property, which is a no-no from an environmental standpoint. In essence, when you do and review an intersection and design, your goal is to avoid, completely avoid 4F property, which are parks and those types of facilities. And then finally, this option would force the access or promotion, this access here, this median would be extended all the way to here, and this approach would then be a right-in and a right-out. So that leaves us with option 3 and option 6. Both of these options, I believe, have been previously presented. Again, it was at the public hearing that we had, and we'd like to get into further details with these. Option 3, like the other options, tees up the intersection to a near 90-degree. The positives is it's a desirable alignment without having to introduce a reverse curve or having to use sharper centerline curves. The intersection is fairly tight, and this option provides the best pedestrian traffic. The line of sight is good. It also provides a desirable signal display. So if you're traveling here, you're able to see, your cone of vision includes where those signals would be located at, and it also provides the best PM level of service. In addition, it leaves the current configuration of the intersection intact, which means that Jackson Boulevard is the main thoroughfare, and Mountain View tees into that. The negatives is it does eliminate five parking stalls in this location, but it does allow, excuse me, the five would be in this location, and it allows two stalls to be left in place. Option 6 was a, developed to provide a solution to maintain the on-street parking that I discussed earlier. It is anticipated that this option would change the traffic flow, and really, when you look at it, it not only changes the traffic flow, but your main movement significantly changes. Now your movement is Mountain View, and your side movement is Jackson Boulevard. The projection that we looked at or what we discussed was that it would, and it would be anticipated that we'd be moving about 10 to 20% of that traffic that currently stays on Jackson over onto Mountain View. This option would, though, allow the parking to be retained on Jackson Boulevard. One of the effects of option 6, it does, is again, one of the things I talked about is what is the impact of additional intersections near in the region? Based on the projection of the 10 to 20% in traffic, it would create additional backup on Mountain View on the West Main intersection. So currently, we have about 240 feet, and it would be anticipated that that would go to 340 feet, which would cause additional delay at this intersection. I'd like to switch gears now and talk about our traffic study that we performed this summer. As you can see, it was performed from May 28th to June 25th, and I'm going to go through some of the things that we saw. As you can see, on one occasion, there was more than one vehicle using the seven stalls that are there. At that instance, there were three vehicles, which accounts to 3% of the time. On 12 occasions, there was one vehicle using the seven stalls, which is about 35% of the time. On 21 occasions, there were no vehicles using the seven stalls, which accounts to about 62% of the time. So for the time period of the study, 97% of the time, the two proposed parking stalls would be adequate to meet the needs of the current day traffic. And in addition, there is also a back alley along these properties, which could provide additional customer drop-off and short-time storage. So in summary, again, looking at the goals for the intersection, for the redesign of this Jackson Boulevard and Main, Mountain View, excuse me, in essence, it's to provide a safer facility for both pedestrians and the vehicular traffic, while at the same time not negatively affecting the traffic operations for nearby intersections. One way to review intersection efficiency is to look at user cost. This calculation is based on the amount of delay that the users will experience. So the calculation takes into account the number of vehicles, including cars and trucks, and you multiply that through the average labor costs that those individuals are getting paid. As you can see, for the 40-year design life of the intersection, option 3 provides nearly $3 million in savings to the traveling public over this 40-year period, and on that table, it's got the construction costs that would go with that, and that's primarily for the So as we review the final two options, which are option 3 and 6, we believe option 3 is the best option that meets the goals of the redesigner of the intersection and is the design that the DOT is preferred. For this option to proceed, it will be necessary to remove some of the existing public parking along Jackson Boulevard. Because this public, this parking is public, it is not considered private property. Therefore, the loss is not considered compensable, and therefore, the DOT cannot pay to remove these parking stalls. When we constructed that section, which was part of South Dakota 44 when it was built in 1960s, the DOT, with taxpayer dollars, paid for those stalls. Because it's on public right-of-way, it's not considered private. Again, so it's non-compensable. Therefore, we are requesting city council's concurrence in the proposed loss of five on-street parking stalls along that section of Jackson Boulevard, which is now your city street. And finally, I'd just like to discuss our schedule as remaining. We have completed landowner meetings, which are meetings that we sit down individually with the landowners and go through the design. Land appraisals for that section, again, from Rapid Creek to Mountain View are substantially complete. Land negotiations- Land negotiations are substantially complete, again, except at the intersection. Construction traffic meetings will be the end of this year and into 2011. And it's hoped that we can start construction late in 2011. The duration of construction will be a year and a half to two and a half years, depending upon weather and other things. With that, whether you want me to take questions now or later, Mayor?
Let me know if you do.
Why don't we go ahead and let's take some public comments. Just one question for you, Joel. On your slide, you were showing option 3A that there was only going to be two parking stalls. But yet, on all the documentations we have under 3A, there's actually three shown in front of those properties. Is it two or three stalls that would remain under option three?
Let me look. 3A provides three.
Okay, very good. I just want, my apologies, I thought you mentioned there were only going to be two left.
And I may have stated that, Mayor.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Let's take some public comments, and then we'll open it up for questions of both the state DOT and also from folks in the audience. Please keep in mind, we do time this. There's about a three-minute. We'll probably give you a little bit of flexibility. We don't have that many speaker request forms. We'd like to just try and limit it to three minutes as close as possible. With that, I'm going to take these in the order that they were turned in. The first one is Randy Downing, item number two, 1104 Jackson. So, again, Randy, if you would please come to the podium and then identify yourself, and then the floor is yours.
Mayor and councilpeople, thank you very much. My name's Randy Downey, and I'm co-owner of Audio Video Solutions, and we own the building at 1104 Jackson. I guess we have somewhat of a catch-22, and I'm not going to read off of my sheet here. Everything that I'm hearing and seeing, obviously, some of the on-street parking is going to go away. I think what is of a bigger concern for us and would be the, if they end up opting for option three, what are they going to do long-term as far as the back of the buildings? Now, there's a couple of the councilpeople that were out and visited our place and are pretty familiar with what takes place back there. A lot of things with our neighbor and unloading, and we have trailers back there that we're backing in. Now, with option three, it's been brought up that the chiropractic wants to make that an open, I don't know, a street or an alley or whatever you want to call it, which is really going to create even greater problems for us as far as the packing or parking in back of the building. You know, first, I want to tell you that I don't want to see any small businesses hurt. I've been in small business my entire life, and I don't want to see anybody up Jackson Boulevard or the chiropractors or Rousch Monuments or us get hurt in this. But it's pretty obvious that the ones that are going to, because of the way that it has been presented under option three, some will get compensated or bought out. So I guess I'm asking to be treated fairly here in this whole thing. It's our business, and Albert's Small Engine Repair are the two that are going to be by far the most affected with this whole thing. And like I say, the ones that have been out and seen the parking, they understand the situation that we've got. We've got our backs against the wall. We're going to take a major hit in the valuations of our buildings, and we're going to take a major hit because we have a tenant in half of our building. They'll have to move. I mean, there's just not going to be the parking out there for them. So I guess that's my two cents worth. I wish I had it a little better together, but there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Chuck Rousch. Again, Chuck, if you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
My name is Chuck Rousch. I own Rousch Monuments and Rousch Granite Products. My business is located right at that intersection was shown on the maps that you saw. I guess for my part, I'm kind of seeing the handwriting on the wall here. We have, the state has offered us to make an offer to either buy me out or pay compensation for the damages. Right now, we've just entered into that. And in my opinion, to keep the playing field level, I would like the city to hang on to these parking spots. It kind of gives the state a clearer picture of what they're negotiating with. If they lose the parking spots, or if we, the city gives them up, the chiropractors and me lose our entryway. That goes with it. Technically, right now, I think the state could even close our entryway if they wanted. But the functionality of the intersection doesn't serve its purpose. They can't do it without these parking spots. They can't make that intersection. Well, the intersection is, the parking spot is the key item to keeping this intersection, to allowing it or to keep it from happening as they would like it. You step into negotiations and, you know, you're kind of going, well, where am I at, you know, and trying to figure out things. And the past month for me has been very busy. I spent 14 days out of town this past month. I'm kind of just getting my feet on the ground on this thing. I've hired a consultant to help me. But I would like to continue this negotiation vis-à-vis the situation that I entered it into, into it with. And so I would be asking the city to delay a decision tonight. 30 days, 60 days, until a reasonable time can pass where I can find a, get a grip of what is the state willing to offer? And where are we at on these negotiations? It may, in the long run, actually speed things up. I think it will motivate the state a little bit to say, look, let's get him an offer and get going on this. And if I lose the parking spots or lose my entryway, it kind of puts pressure on, it changes the framework of the negotiation to more like we have to go to court to get what's fair now. And I believe that could stretch things out a little bit, which I don't want. I do not want at all. Ideally, for me, I get a decent offer from the state. I find a location to move to, and we get going. And the sooner the better. Spring is a busy time for me. The more I can get done now, I don't think I'll have this all completed through the spring. But the more I can get done now, the clearer I can think, et cetera, it'll help me on into summer, on into fall, et cetera. So I would ask for a delay from the city on this. I'm not sure how to put it all correctly. I hope somebody will stand up for me. I would say 60 days if I could.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Albert Gonzalez. Am I close? If you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Albert Gonzalez. I own Albert Small Engine and the property of 1108 Jackson Boulevard and 1112 Jackson Boulevard. When you see those pictures they show in the end, there was people parking in front of my building. That's most of my business doing through the front. And sometimes they go through the back. Taking those parking spaces in the front, where it will create more traffic in the back, I will have a problem with my neighbors. And if they reopen the alley, we're going to have a bigger problem because I can't serve my customers. I don't know what to do. And the only thing I want you to really think about what they're going to do, they haven't made me an effort or a choice that I can do to run my business where no parking space, by the law, I shouldn't have no business. I don't know what to do. I have any solutions, what to do with my business. Thank you.
Thank you. Also have a speaker request form from Tracy Kursnack. Again, Tracy, please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Tracy Kursnack, and I'm the other half owner of Audio Video Solutions at 1104 Jackson Boulevard. I'd like to thank the council members for your time and effort in communicating with us on this issue. It's been been long and drawn out, but I'll try not to cover the same ground that the other speakers have already covered. Obviously, our main interest is in keeping parking places up front. And the DOT has a great presentation that they put together. I wish I had use of it right now. But I really believe that one option that they've eliminated, 3A, is at least a viable option. That saves one more parking place. I also believe that option six is workable if they changed it a little bit. Their claims of pushing traffic onto Mountain View with option six, I think, and not to disparage anybody, was designed to create contention between business owners east of us and those people that want to keep the parking places there. I think if you look at the designs, option six is the only one that has two turn lanes onto Mountain View. I had a question of why they put two turn lanes there if they want to keep traffic on Jackson Boulevard. And that would be the owners to the east preference, and certainly the city's preference to not plug up the intersection there at Main and Mountain View. I think that design could be looked at again. And although I'm not an engineer, and I'm sure that they've taken a lot of time, that that option is a viable option and could save the parking places. I'm afraid it would still eliminate the entrance into Rousch Monument and the Advanced Chiropractic, which does bring up the can of worms of what's going to happen to those places if they're purchased by the state. I asked Tom Heran, and he emailed me back, that they would be sold to the public again, either at auction or offered in some fashion. And then you've got two buildings, probably 7,000 or 8,000 square feet, that are going to be occupied by something eventually with no access to those buildings other than through the alley, which really will create a problem. The alley is 20 feet wide, tough to get two-way traffic, snow removal, all sorts of issues with a small alley and two-way traffic back there. And then the other option is to do nothing, is to leave the intersection as it is. Understand that the state says they can do that because they have to meet federal standards. When this project started and I talked to the DOT before we bought our building, they indicated to me that the project would have no effect on the property at 1104 Jackson, which tells me that they either weren't planning on remodeling the section, the intersection at that time, or didn't feel that they needed to reconstruct it in a fashion that was going to affect our property. On that information, we bought our building, and we spent a lot of money and time and effort remodeling our building. And as Randy said, we'll have definite devaluation of our property, lost revenue through the loss of our tenant, probably. And, you know, an inconvenience to customers and lost business because of that. I'd ask that the council consider retaining all of the parking places in some fashion and ask the DOT to come up with a design that can accommodate that issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. Also have a speaker request form from Craig Tezen. Again, if you'd like, please identify yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Craig Tezen. I'm a state senator. I represent District 34, which is most of West Rapid City. Does not include the intersection or the properties we're talking about here tonight, but does include many of the 20-some thousand drivers and vehicles that go through this intersection every day and will for the next 40 years after it's reconstructed. I think perhaps those drivers are maybe the silent majority in this discussion here tonight. And I'd ask you not to, not to forget that what we decide and the design that we decide here tonight will be something that will be put into place and it'll be the way that street is for the next 40 years. I would ask you to consider the design of alternate three or the alternate three that the state has proposed. They've been working on this for a long time. As you know, this plan has been moving forward for a number of years. The state has been working closely with the city to coordinate the utility work that needs to be done along with the construction. We're now at a point where this is ready to move forward. We need to get this project done. This portion of Jackson Boulevard is deteriorating rapidly. And I would like to see the project move forward. I think that option three makes the best use of the public right-of-way in that area. And on behalf of the motorists that use that intersection on a daily basis, I would urge you to move forward with option three. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? Why don't you go ahead and come on up?
I need to fill out a speaker form.
That's all right. We'll make sure we get to everyone. If you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
Kami Wood. I'm a chiropractor at Advanced Chiropractic. I feel that the presentation a little bit failed to address myself probably being the primary user of the intersection, accessing my parking lot 10, 20 times a day. I feel I'm left with little options. I haven't, there's been talk of negotiations, but nothing has been presented to me yet. I would obviously favor option six and hope that the city would keep the parking places. I relocated back to Rapid City four years ago, my hometown, and put a lot of money and effort and time into re-establishing my business and don't want to move or have my access eliminated. And would hope that something else can be done that would be conducive to my, still running my business. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this item that does not fill out a speaker request form? If not, we will go to the council. We'll go ahead and consider the public comments closed. But please keep in mind, you may be, there may be some questions from the council for both audience members and also the state DOT. With that, any questions from the council? Say, Joel, could you do me a favor? Could you actually put up your recommendation? I guess I'm a little bit confused because I have a couple different versions of 3A. One shows three stalls without a light on the, basically in the parking lot of Rousch. And then there's another one that I have that actually shows a signal in the parking lot. Can you just put it up so everyone can actually understand where we're at?
3A, Mayor?
Okay.
Or 3A. 3A or 3?
Whatever one you're recommending. Which one are you recommending?
Three?
Okay, thank you. And that's the one that had the two stalls.
3A had three stalls.
Okay, very good. I'm going to go to the council. With that, I'm going to go to Alderman Bilwa.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few comments, and then I also have a couple of quick questions. First of all, I would, I would like to thank the DOT for the effort that they have made to have public hearings and gather information from concerned parties. Having said that, though, after looking at both option three and option six, I have to agree with one of the gentlemen that spoke that you basically are kind of forming a battle line between certain businesses on Jackson Boulevard against other businesses. And to be quite honest, I don't like either option. I don't like option three, and I don't like option six. With that, I would like to ask the question to anybody from the DOT, if we left the intersection as is, does that affect federal funding?
Joel?
Mayor, yes, it definitely affects federal funding. This project primarily will utilize federal funding to reconstruct this intersection. And one of their requirements is it meets all the federal requirements, which is ADA accessible. So as I stated earlier in my presentation, doing nothing or doing option one or 1A is not acceptable in their minds and not acceptable in our minds just due to the fact that we need to meet those ADA requirements. So it would jeopardize federal funds. In essence, couldn't, wouldn't be allowed to utilize that. Mayor, if I also could expand upon the statement that was talked about between option three and option six. Believe me, we do not intend to put business owners against business owner. The options were presented based and came up with based on the movement of traffic through this intersection. As the reason why you only see one left turn lane at option three, this option is the amount of traffic that will travel through that. Option six is to completely change the configurations of the intersection and make Highway 44 the main movement of traffic. You have, use this pen again, you have two lanes of through traffic going eastbound on Highway 44. It is not, and this is the Design 101, it's not It is not, and this is the Design 101, it's not conducive to make that traffic merge into one lane and go through this intersection and then have two lanes here. So, that is the purpose of why you have two lanes going in each direction.
Mr. Bilwa, you still have the floor, sir.
So, bottom line is if we don't reconfigure that intersection that's been that way for 40 years, we are going to lose, do you have a dollar amount that we're going to lose? Or is it to the point where if we don't reconfigure that intersection, we won't do the project? We will not upgrade Jackson Boulevard?
Joel?
Mayor, typically our conversation with federal highways, you just can't separate one aspect of the project out. You need to have logical termini. The logical termini in this situation is this intersection because we have rebuilt from Mountain View going north. Therefore, they will withdraw federal funds off the entire intersection, excuse me, the entire project, which includes that project to the west, probably from Canyon Lake Drive to Rapid Creek.
Okay.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, just one final comment. Mr. Tezen was talking about 20,000 people that use Jackson Boulevard, and I'm in agreement with Mr. Tezen that Jackson Boulevard does need to be reconstructed. It's why one of the, condition-wise, one of the poorest main artilleries in Rapid City. But I'm still very concerned about reconfiguring that intersection. But I'll yield the floor and listen to some of my other council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman. Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a motion for the sake of discussion.
Sure. Why don't you go ahead and make the motion, please?
Okay. I would like to offer a motion to continue this item to the second city council meeting in January to allow Department of Transportation to continue the negotiation and discussion with the affected landowners and to post and to have all the options posted to the agenda along with the additional public comments that have been received.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. The motion on the floor, which is actually an original motion, is to continue this item to the second city council meeting in January and also have all the documentations, including the public discussion and public testimony that was given tonight linked. Well, okay, that's true. The first one was to acknowledge the report, so we'll treat it as a substitute then. Okay? Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman. Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask the state exactly what sort of negotiations they are in with the buyout, as it was stated earlier. What exactly is the status of that? And how long do you think that will take?
Joel?
Mayor, we actually have not offered, I started our negotiations with those business, those properties for a couple of reasons. One, we do not have the appraisal done. The appraisal will look at the elimination of that access. And the reason why we're eliminating that access is in essence, the safety of the intersection is just too close to that intersection for it to properly operate. And so, we're concerned about the safety of that. So, therefore, we are in the appraisal process for those businesses. Timeframe-wise, I'm assuming it'll take us approximately a month, and the negotiations would take place after that. The appraisal is not a clear cut of how things work here relative to the negotiations. What will happen is, is we will look at the properties, look at the elimination or the removal of that access, and then identify fair market value based on damages. And from those damages, look at the evaluation of the property and determine whether we're going to buy them out or whether we're going to look at paying them damages and give them the opportunity to stay business-wise or building-wise, retain the property. So, again, it's not clear cut of how it is. It has, we need to look at the appraisal process and determine where we're going to be at with that. Mayor, if I may, just one other issue relative to the motion. The elimination of those five parking stalls, and again, the delay, saying that we're going, the council's going to delay the decision on that until the negotiations take place. If the council does not approve the elimination of these parking stalls, the option is pretty well in deep trouble. Do you understand what I'm saying? We can't have one or the other. We can't go and purchase those properties or pay damages knowing that the option's not viable because the city council has not approved the removal of those stalls.
Okay, Mr. Mason, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So, is it my understanding that essentially you're, let me rephrase this question, is, are we on a time basis here to make a decision on this based on the effect of the federal funding? If we don't act, is there an effect on that federal funding?
Joel?
Mayor, Mr. Mason, the timeframe of the decision really dictates when the project is going to be let to bid and when we can start construction. That's probably the biggest thing. Relative to the jeopardizing federal funds to spend on this because it's delayed too far, Congress can do a lot of things. You know, we're still waiting on the extension of new highway bill, but we're assuming that's going to take place and the funds are going to be there, so.
Mr. Mason, you still have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to ask one additional question actually to Mr. Rousch. And I guess I'm curious if we were to delay until the next meeting in January, if that's my under?
Second meeting in January.
Second meeting in January, if that would be adequate time for you, sir?
For me to respond, I think I respond fairly quickly once the state makes an offer. So, I'm thinking within a couple of weeks I can have my responses done. How many days is it, the second meeting in?
It'd be about six weeks, a little over six weeks.
Well, let's assume I can get an offer within a month, I think. I think, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rousch. I yield the floor.
Thank you.
A little comment if I could. Can I make a comment?
I've given everybody a little bit of leeway, so go ahead, Mr. Rousch.
If the state would make an offer contingent upon the fact that they can get the parking spaces, I can, we can work with that.
Okay, thank you.
That does not, so that eliminates the catch-22, I hope.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman. Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuation on Mr. Rousch's comment because that was actually my first question is, do we have the opportunity to approve vacating those spaces with the stipulation that that could be withdrawn in the event that an agreement was not reached with those property owners? Is that workable with the DOT?
Let's go to the DOT.
I mean, it sounds like we have a catch-22 and we're trying to find a way to break that.
Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, I'd be somewhat cautious to, you know, make this contingent upon negotiation, being able to be resolved with those business owners. That negotiation takes place between the state and those owners. And it's not really, you know, pardon the pun, but it's not privy to your folks' agreeing to that. And I don't mean to be harsher, but those are private negotiations that take place.
My point was not our agreement to the dollar amounts, but rather whether the two of you were not able to come to an agreement that we had the opportunity to not follow through with those three parking spaces. Right now, it appears that we're in or we're out. We either vacate the parking spaces to you or we don't. And that's what I'm, it sounds like you need those three parking spaces before you can begin the negotiation. And yet, once we've done that, we're out of it as a city. We've put all of our cards on the table now. And that's what I'm trying to find, is there a way to get past the catch-22 that, like Mr. Rousch suggested, that if the offers were made contingent upon those parking spaces, that he'd be willing to work with that? I'm just looking, is there a legal way for us to approach that? And then maybe I should be addressing our city attorney, who I already think I have the answer from the look on his face.
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
I would, I would not be optimistic that a contingency of that nature would be permissible. I'm not willing to say absolutely not without doing some research, but I really don't think it's viable.
Okay, thank you. That was kind of a side question. So, now I'll get into the line of questioning that I really needed for you, Joel, and you're not off the hot seat by any means. So, I, by no means am I going to presume that myself or my colleagues or any of the landowners are as professional of designers and traffic engineers as all of you. And I'm assuming that these designs that you brought to us are the best that you've got. I can't believe that you would have held something back. And I appreciate the fact that you looked at traffic flow and safety and that you were trying to protect all of those things when you put those designs. If I was asked to vote tonight on one of these, though, I have to admit, what I'm really asked is not to vote in favor of something, but rather, I'm being asked to who I'm going to vote against. Because that's really what our option is tonight. Am I voting to take a couple of small businesses and hurt them severely? Or, as Option 6, in essence, shut down Jackson Boulevard for about 10 blocks and affect 40 businesses? Logic's pretty simple, what direction we would probably go. But it seems like that's what, the discussion is kind of stopping right there. It seems like we've come to this point of saying, well, sacrifice those two and that's it. And I'm not willing to do that. I'm a small business person myself, and I guess I'm looking at it that the series of questions I've got are going to lead up to possibly a suggestion, whether or not you can work with it, you're going to have to tell me. If you were to be able to buy the Rousch building, what's the state's intent for the use of that property?
Mayor? Go ahead, please.
Couple of things. One, this is a reconfiguration. We would love to go in there and not impact anybody. If this was a complete new design that we didn't have existing businesses on either side, we would, you know, hopefully we would avoid not have to get into anything. The problem with this is this is a reconfiguration. You've got existing businesses, you have existing properties, and what we're trying to do is mesh those and get the best design. We have spent considerable amount of time reviewing options, reviewing designs, and trying to figure out what is the best for the overall users. Granted, it definitely is going to be some impact. And in its impact, what we're trying to do is avoid the most and provide a design that for the majority of the users that use this intersection, provide that. I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, I forgot your other question.
The real question was, in the event that you're able to negotiate with Mr. Rousch and buy his property, what is the state's intent for the use of that building?
If the negotiations ended up in that situation and it was favorable for the DOT to acquire those properties, what we would do with them is put them up for public auction.
So, in essence, for, to put it into a layman's term, we're going to take an individual that isn't happy with the situation, buy them out, and then sell them to somebody who understands that they're buying them with those stipulations?
Correct.
Fair enough. I mean, in essence, sell them, sell them at a reduced price to somebody that doesn't care about the access issue.
Mayor, they would be treated fairly. Same federal requirements that we have when we do the design, we have to meet those when we acquire right-of-way. So, we go out and we do our appraisals, do two appraisals actually, and then work with them, determine what that fair market value is.
So, the real answer would be is it would be the state's desire to resell the property and to leave both those structures standing?
If it would work out for the landowners. Again, you need to look at the appraisal and what the damages are, if there are damages, and weigh those against what the property is worth as a whole. And then we would then, again, sell those to public auction and try to get the most money for the taxpayers back out of those.
Okay. So, if that's the case, that if those buildings were to be resold at a future date and their access off of Jackson Boulevard has been eliminated, is it fair to say that at some point in the future, the city would be asked to provide access from the east side headed north? Would that alleyway then be needed to be turned into a street so that there would be access to Advanced Chiropractic and the Rousch building so that you could get into that parking lot that already exists?
Joel?
Mr. Davis, what we would do, and I don't know the situation with the alley. I'm assuming that it is not vacated and is an active public property, the city's property, that it abuts those businesses. When we would, if we were to acquire those properties, we would place a control of access on the deed of those properties. So, anybody that purchases those properties, no, they're not going to get access off of Jackson Boulevard. And in regards to the alley, I'm not quite sure what the situation is. I believe it has not been vacated, so it is, should be available and be used by anybody that so desires. Did I answer your question, Mr.?
I don't think you answered the question the way you wanted to, but yes, you answered my question. Because basically, what I'm hearing is, if the state were to find a way that Advanced Chiropractic and Rousch were to be bought out or if they were to stay and be compensated for it, in essence, the alley to the east of Jackson Boulevard would become the access to those two properties.
Joel?
Mayor, there would still be two stalls in front for them to utilize. And those stalls are not dedicated per businesses.
Those stalls are nowhere near those buildings.
Correct. So, that is still, you know, some parking availability. But yes, and then the remainder is going to have to come off with the access or something else that they may have to work out with an adjacent property owner, and there may not be any options. I don't know.
Just to clarify, those two stalls are a block, half a block north of what we're talking about, Advanced Chiropractic and Rousch. So, the access would be down the alleyway. And I guess the point that I'm looking at, and I hate to sound so pessimistic, but it sounds at this point that we're headed down the track of Option 3. And if that's the case, I want to find a way to make Option 3 not be a total loss. Because right now, I see a couple of property owners who, if you're Option 3, we create an island with no bridge. I mean, they truly don't. And I know that property well. My first office, when I moved to town in 1983, was one of these buildings that we're talking about. I know the area very, very well. It looks to me like there's going to be a time in the not-so-distant future where if those buildings that we know as Advanced Chiropractic and Rousch Monument are accessing Jackson Boulevard via that alley, we're going to be asked to turn that into a street and probably required. And that's going to cost the city of Rapid City a fair amount of money to do that. And I think that's an important thing that we take a look at is just what our involvement is going to be in the future. And not to mention the fact that we've taken two buildings now, that we've taken the parking from the west side, the front, and now if we put in that, turn that alley into a street, we've completely taken away their ability to do business from the back, from the east as well, especially since the kind of business that one of those operates. So, what I'm suggesting, since you've got the time to look at this, that you work with our growth management and explore the possibility of what I'm suggesting, that if that alley is going to become a street, and if in fact you do buy the Rousch Monument building, that you explore the possibility of demolishing that building, allowing access to that parking lot for the Albert Small Engine Repair to the south. Demolishing a small portion, probably 15 feet of the back of Albert's building so that that's, because that's what's going to happen when it becomes a street anyway. We're going to tear off part of the backs of those buildings no matter what. But if we were doing that, if we took the backs of those buildings off and made it a street and gave them access to the south through what is now the Rousch building and brought on a pedestrian sidewalk down the west side of that new street, which is now the alley, allowing that building, Mr. Kryznik and Downey's building and Albert's building, still having access off the street to the east, which is now the alley, having pedestrian sidewalk, having a way that their customers can still do business, we haven't put them out of business. We've created a piece of property there that, you know, it's still, it's still functional. It's still useful, it still has value, and it still has property tax values because, quite frankly... has property tax values, because quite frankly, I can see it going the other way. If, if we take those two buildings, or those two property owners, and, and we create this little island with no way to get to them, the, the long range is not good for them, and ultimately, it's not very good for the, the taxable values on them either. So, as you've got the time to work through those, if you would explore that, just what the state's involvement legally can be in that financially, because obviously, somewhere down the road, we're going to be asked to pay for that street. And it looks like that whole street and the whole concept of, of where that's going is because of what's going on out in front. It looks to me like all the, all, everything you've done, it looks like three probably is the right answer. It's the one that protects most of the businesses down the road, it's, it's the safest, it moves the most traffic. But I think we've got to find a way that, that we don't create this island for those businesses, and so with that, I'll yield, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have questions for the DOT. You can bring your chair up and just sit there, I suppose.
Go ahead, please.
First off, I do appreciate all these different options, and I'm assuming that option three is safer than option six. It seems like it has a lot less curves and things in it.
Go ahead, please.
One of the big things between three, option three and option six, is the alignment and the, the ability for the traveling public to see that signal display in the correct amount of time and make the stop or green or whatever. So, I would say that option three, in our minds, provides a safer intersection than option six does.
Okay. Are you, that's a state road, are you the one that controls the number of parking spaces that are there, or is the city ordinance or something control how many that can be there?
Joel?
Mayor, the, the parking stalls where they're located and what we're requesting your concurrence to remove are on city maintained Jackson Boulevard Street, not on the state highway.
Okay.
That piece was transferred to the city quite a number of years ago.
Okay, so is Marcia still here?
Yep.
Or is she the one that I would need to ask? Marcia, I was just wondering if we could get another parking space in there if we kind of weren't so keen on keeping our regular ordinance, making an exception.
Marcia, do you have a copy of the layout three? Marcia, do you understand?
Perhaps, perhaps you can clarify another parking space in where?
On this option three there, they have two, two parking spaces, and I'm sure you don't want one right on a corner, would be what I'm thinking. It just looks to me like there, unless there's a fire hydrant right there at the corner or something, it just seems to me there, another parking place would fit in there if we were, you know.
This location, is that what you're?
Yep.
It appears to me that they've shown two just as close as they possibly can to the intersection. And again, I'd have to scale it off, but just on the fly here, it looks like they've left everything they possibly could. I assume their design engineers looked at that.
Okay. I guess, and maybe it's the different pictures, but it looks to me like there could be one, two, three on this.
Perhaps.
But you're, you're used, more used to reading these kind of things than I am, so.
Marcia?
Neil.
Mayor. Neil, go ahead, please.
If I can answer your question for you, currently, there is on what would be the quadrant with Clearview, there is no parking spot at that corner. There was at one time, and my understanding was it was removed because of site distance issues. So, what you're seeing there is we've got two parking stalls, and then we're honoring that no parking that's there today.
Okay, so if we decided we could use that as a parking space, then we could maybe get another parking space in there, possibly?
You could, but you'd be introducing the site distance issues for people coming off of Clearview, excuse me, onto Jackson.
Marcia, did you want to add something?
I believe there was some litigation or threatened litigation that resulted in that parking spot being removed a number of years ago.
I see. Well, one of the reasons, obviously, trying to make the best of a situ, a bad situation, no matter how you slice it, and just saying that with the study that all those parking places were seldom used, thinking that maybe the traffic there would actually be very minimal, and so that's what I was kind of exploring, that option, if we could get another parking place in there. And you, just out of curiosity, you had said that site has 1.3 accident rate per million? Like, what's your ideal, I mean, obviously, zero, but, you know, what's your acceptable rate at one of these places?
Mr. Junt?
Zero would be the desired, but that's pretty well unachievable. If we can get into the same situation we have at Sturgis Road in West Main, which is 0.8 per million vehicles, that would, that would be good.
Okay, so that's, that's, you're comfortable with that? Okay. Are you, if we postpone this until mid-January, is that going to work for you, or you'll just start doing option six?
Joel?
It's a wonderful question. To be honest with you, if, if council does not approve the removal of these parking stalls, I wish I had the magic wand to make everything wonderful. I, I don't. We have looked at this intersection and beat our heads together trying to figure out what is something that would work for everybody. We believe option three provides a compromise, and it is a compromise. I think we, we would be stalled, to be honest with you, if, if, if option three, if city council does not approve the, the removal of these five parking stalls, we're, you know, we're, we're tough. I don't, I don't have a good answer for you. You know, option six is out there, but to be honest with you, my personal opinion as director of planning engineering, I don't think it meets the mark of what we want for the traveling public.
Bonnie, you still have a question?
Okay. Nope, I will, well, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my question would be for Jason Green.
Go ahead, please.
Is he in the audience? I don't see him over there.
Here he comes.
I just did that to get you back here, man. Jason, basically, what we're, what we're challenged with here is whether we give up the three parking spots or not. I mean, options are, those aren't really up to us. Am I clear on that?
Jason?
Well, I think it's the council's decision whether you're going to authorize the removal of the on-street parking spaces, and I, I think you have the absolute discretion to make that decision. So, you know, I think they've given you the option that they will use if the parking spaces are not authorized to be removed, but ultimately, the decision is the council's.
Right. I guess, I guess that's my, getting it down to the bottom line is, the council's just challenged with whether we give up the, the parking spots or not. Clearly, we don't have any say-so in any designs or any of that stuff on, I mean, clearly, judging from the DOT's response about continuing this, is that if we continue it, they could go ahead and change the option and just say, have a good day anyway. Correct?
Jason?
I think that would be within the DOT's authority, yes.
I think we got a response from, go ahead.
Mayor, if I may, you know, if, if it comes to the point where we've got to go back again and we look at this, we're going to have to go to the public again. I mean, that, that's a prudent thing to do, is it gives everybody's input and allows the opportunity to, to speak on it.
I, you know, I look at this and I look at the, the option six when they talk about moving the traffic down Mountain View, and I understand what Mr. Davis says, obviously, when you own a business, some of the, the best value comes from, you know, how many cars you can get in front of your store, but if you have nowhere to park, it's, it's a moot point anyway, because people aren't going to shop there. But we have a problem coming down Main Street off that blind corner off of Jackson Boulevard, anyway, come, once they come there, they take a right, and the traffic just feeds down there. I'm thinking that option six probably would maybe alleviate some of that problem that we have there. But one of the questions I had for the DOT, Mr. Mayor, is have they looked at moving this intersection east-southwest, I think it's southwest on this map, kind of going back and having discussions, everybody kind of taking a little bit different approach on what's south and what's west, so.
Ken Fergin.
Down Jackson Boulevard.
I think what you're talking about is basically moving it, we'll call it to the southwest, or basically towards the nursing home or the water treatment.
Exactly. I'm looking at an option number five here, and I think when, when, when the DOT discussed that, they were talking about the curvature of that road there, but moving that, actually straightening it out and moving the, moving the intersection down there farther, which less affects everybody involved, but, man, that's just my opinion, but maybe I'm, you could explain that.
Joel?
That was one of the options that we discussed in my presentation, and again, it introduces a reverse curve, and anytime you have more curves into any alignment, it's, it's potential to provide more accident. And the other thing that I talked about in that option is that property, I believe, is city-owned property that is leased, and it, it's considered parked property, which means you get into the environmental aspect of parked property, which is called 4F. Again, when you do those, the desire is to avoid them completely.
And that's, I think that's what I heard you say earlier, so that was the biggest determinant from actually bringing that proposal forward, because I think that you could get, eliminate the curve by just direction, moving the intersection down the road. I mean, by looking at your pictures and your, your drawings, you're, you're talking about option five with the reverse curve, you're talking about coming up and then back down?
Correct, by the Claxton property, is that the one we're looking at?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just moving it down there further ahead. I guess that's all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go back to Alderman, Bill Waugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question for Joel, if you would.
Joel, there's no sense in sitting down.
It looked like you were getting comfortable, and I didn't, you know. I'm going to kind of go into fantasy land now. If, if we did approve option three and allow you, and eliminate those parking places, and then we proceeded down the path and you bought Roush, what would be the chances of the state, once you own the Roush building, is demolishing it, selling that property to the other business owners and turning it into a parking lot?
Joel?
First, we would have to identify that demolishing those buildings provide the best value to return on the taxpayers' dollars. If that was such, one thing, we would not want to own that, so we'd probably be looking at the city to acquire that property based on the appraised value to provide those parking. Again, the parking that is, currently exists on Jackson Boulevard is public property. By federal rules, we cannot pay to compensate anybody for those stalls, because they are on public right-of-way. That's an issue that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. Let's go to Alderman, Dave Davis.
Joel, just a continuation off of Bill's question, you can't pay for those stalls, but could you trade those stalls for the Roush property?
Joel?
Could you, could the state buy the Roush property and trade it to the city for those stalls?
We could offer it up to you to purchase it based on their appraised value. I do not believe that we can offer them up to you, again, because those stalls are on public property, so the answer is no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you. There's been a lot of talk also about this alleyway, and I was hoping to maybe get some clarification on that. I'm just looking at some of the space between, behind some of these buildings, and I mean, it doesn't look much more than, I don't know, I'm assuming the width of a truck is about six and a half, seven feet, so 10 feet wide. How do you, I guess I would like to hear a little more elaboration on the back of that alleyway, how that's going to work and.
Marcia, did you say the alleyway's 20-foot width there? I thought I heard the comment a little bit earlier, it's 20-foot.
It's warmer up here in the front of the room, anyway, so, yes, it's a 20-foot alleyway, and there's not been any survey to make sure there's no encroachments there, but it is an open alley that is right-of-way owned by the city of Rapid City on behalf of the public.
Now, Mr. Junt, do you remember the question, or could I have Mr. Mason repeat the question for you?
I believe the question was, is what type of maneuvering could take place within that 20 feet? It really depends upon the type of vehicles that are using those, is, are we talking about a semi-truck, are we talking about a pickup with a flatbed trailer, those types of things? And with that, where are they going? If they're coming on the side street and making their maneuver going down the alley, yes, I believe that that maneuver can take place. If they're backing up and doing other things, you know, without putting, we have what we call truck-turning templates that mimic how a vehicle operates, and I don't know if, Neil, if we've done that, nope, haven't done that, so. Depending upon the use and where their doors are located at and how they're going to access that, I can't answer that in detail.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Further discussion. I guess I do have one question. Joel, can you put up A3 for me? Can I just? Oops, you went one too far, I think. Okay, whoops. Right there. Now, that's A3, is that correct?
Mayor, 3A, if that's one and the same.
Yeah.
Yep.
3A, and that retains three parking stalls. The question I had was the pedestrian crossing, and I'm going to call it on the east end of the intersection, which is actually the north part of the intersection, is that required there, or can you actually just have the one pedestrian crossing to the south of that and then go across? In other words, you basically have a three-legged pedestrian crossing, can you eliminate the one to the north and put an additional parking stall in there?
Mayor, we've, we've tried that in other intersections, and we haven't been able to do that. Again, it, it, you need to provide all intersection legs that ability for accessing, so you're not discriminating against one or the other.
And that's part of the ADA requirement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
With the three stalls that are here, the reason why you can get three is because the intersection has moved approximately 40 feet, I think it's on, no, 40 feet to west, yeah, it's on, it's on the title there. One thing that this option versus three is that pedestrian crossing is skewed maybe more than option three. If, if the council is looking for three stalls to be placed in here, I would be willing to look at that and see if we can get three stalls in this location. But again, I, I don't know what your, your ultimate goal is here would be to keep them all. That would be ours, too, but it's just not possible. So, maybe that's a question to the council that I might ask, and whether you want to answer that or not, I'll leave that up to the council.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you. I guess, Joel, in direct answer to your question, it seems to me that the option that we're all seeking is trying to keep as many stalls as possible, so if, if 3A or some version of 3A would work, then I think that that's something that needs to come forward in, in January, if you're willing to do that.
Mayor, I, I am willing to, to be honest with you, three provides the best alignment for us in where we're at. I think we can tweak that design enough to get three stalls in that area by, by changing the skew of the pedestrian crossing, if that helps.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you strove the floor, sir.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think if we could do three stalls, that would help, and then secondly, we listened to a business owner earlier tonight who said that she hadn't even been approached on, on, on her concerns or negotiations, and so I guess my expectation, and I'm one of 10, but my, my expectation is, is that there would be an adequate conversation with her so that in January, she's feeling like her concerns have, there's at least been an attempt to address those, so, you know, and then the, then, so that's, so there's two things there. One is try to maintain as many stalls as possible, two, make sure all the business owners are talked to, and three, if there is an option that we can choose that addresses all of the ADA issues without changing the alignment of the intersection, I don't know if that option's been looked at, I'm sure you've already looked at it, but can you answer that now, or would you rather answer that in January?
Joel?
I can answer that now, Councilman Quaker. I think we've, I have challenged my designers to look at this intersection and do the best job that they can. I believe that they have done that. The reason why that business owner has not been contacted, we'll back up, we have sat down and met with them and, and looked at these alternatives, these options, and discussed some possibilities. We will not go to them with a price for negotiations until the appraisal is done. We will not go to them with the price for negotiations until the appraisal is done. Again, that's going to be a couple of weeks to a month, I'm assuming, talking for my right-of-way person in pure, but once we get those appraisals done, then we can start the negotiations.
Then that leads to my final question, and that is, is that if the appraisal is not done for another month, are you going to have time between the appraisal and the second meeting and council meeting in January to have an adequate discussion with the business owners?
Joel?
If not, Councilman, we will notify you and look at moving the date back.
Thank you.
Let's go to Alderman, Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, I want to give you my version of the answer to that question that you asked about two stalls or three stalls, and I'm sure that if you talk to those landowners along there, it becomes, or four stalls, or 12 stalls, whatever it is, I'm sure that those landowners, every one of them is, every one of those stalls is extremely important to them. Once again, I just want to reiterate that, let me take a step back, having been in business along there, I think getting out of your car in one of those parallel parking spaces on Jackson Boulevard, you're taking life in your own hands anyway. I mean, I think it's kind of a dangerous place to get out of, so that really is marginal, in my opinion, as far as whether we're saving two stalls or three. The big issue is what's happening to the access to the Advanced Chiropractic and the Roush Building, and the impact that that access, or taking away of that access, is going to have on all of those buildings. I see that as a much greater issue than whether there's two stalls, three stalls, or seven stalls out in front. It's the back of the building that I think is going to be impacted even greater in the long run. If the access point to Advanced Chiropractic and Roush is closed, that alleyway becomes a street, and that's going to, even if Albert has one parking space right in front of his business, he has no way to get anything in and out anymore, because he can't have someone pull up in front of the, into the back on the east side of his building and unload a lawnmower on a street. So I really see that, I don't want to get too much emphasis on two stalls or three, let's look at the whole picture here, and that is the accessibility of those businesses, and I think that's a key issue here, so I yield.
Thank you. Further discussion. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is to continue this item to the second city council meeting in January, and to make sure that we have all the attachments, not only the handouts that were given out, but also the testimony that was also given tonight. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This item has been continued to the second city council meeting in January. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. We have a motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.[1765.41]